One minute.
Good morning, and thank you for attending our special meeting today, which will be the appointment of our superintendent. Today is June 14th, 2023. Please stand for the pledge.
...under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you again for joining us today, a very important day indeed. We are really going to start with public comment today. We are collecting cards at, I believe we are concluded at this point. Each person will have three minutes to speak. When the time flash is yellow, you need to begin to summarize, and when the buzzer rings, please stop speaking. As many people will know, this is arguably the most important decision the school board will make when it comes to selecting a superintendent. And I understand that our community has a variety of viewpoints and passion for the issues that we will be discussing today. And while in past, I've probably been a little bit more gracious with any disruptions in the crowd, today there will be zero tolerance for that. And it's very important that each board member have the opportunity to hear every single person who speaks. So there will be no warning. If you cannot control yourself, we will have to clear the gallery, and we will take 10 people at a time. So we will get right to it, and we'll start with Beth Ruger. Jill Marsh, thank you so much.
Good morning. My name is Beth Ruger. I'm a product of the Sarasota County school system. I attended Phillippe Shores Elementary, Brookside Junior High, and I graduated from Aruvie High School. I'm currently a teacher with Sarasota County Schools, but my career path was different than most educators. I was a software aerospace engineer. I also brought a biomedical anesthesia simulator to market, a stay-at-home mom, and then I became certified to teach math and computer science. So needless to say, I am very passionate and involved in education. My three daughters also attended schools here in Sarasota, and while they were in elementary school, we were fortunate enough to have the best fifth-grade teacher in the entire system, Dr. Foster. She was Ms. Stewart at the time, though. I'm here to personally and professionally endorse Dr. Foster. She's the best person and the right person for the superintendent role. Her consistency, knowledge, and deep local Sarasota roots make her the clear and obvious best choice for the board. First, Dr. Foster consistently believes in Sarasota County Schools and always wants the best for all in our schools, the students and the teachers. The other candidates, to the best of my knowledge, have not mentioned the support or care of teachers. Dr. Foster has a proven track record in taking care of students and teachers. Second, the knowledge that Dr. Foster has of Sarasota County Schools at every level gives her a strong and clear advantage compared to the other candidates. She knows what is working well and what needs to be improved. She knows the knowledge and the ability to make a strong, positive improvement and make them quickly without a learning curve. She's an experienced leader that will select the right team to do the hard work and what is best for all of the stakeholders, the community, board, teachers, students, and parents. We know what we are getting with Dr. Foster as our superintendent. There should not be any surprises. As you know, Dr. Foster is a product of the Sarasota County school system. She was a fantastic teacher, a loved and respected principal, a very successful HR executive, and now she's our acting superintendent. Her deep, local Sarasota roots and commitment to Sarasota County Schools have been on full display for two-plus decades. What other candidates have those proven attributes? Dr. Foster also has a skin in the game. She is the mother with children in our school system. When it comes to doing what is best for our school, there's no stronger incentive than being a parent in that system. Thank you for your time speaking today, and I will leave you with this final thought. Wilma Hamilton. Wilma is remembered as the best superintendent in the history of Sarasota County Schools. She's a legend.
I don't want to cut you off, because I love when you...
That's okay.
But we have to make it to three minutes, so...
That's okay. So please vote for Allison.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. I kept watching the yellow.
Jill Marsh, thank you so much. Jill Marsh and Tanya Quinn.
Hello, I'm Jill Marsh. I have worked in Sarasota County Schools for 14 years now, first out of charter school, and then at Phillippe Shores Elementary. I was fortunate enough to have Allison be my principal for eight years when I was there. She is an amazing leader, and I've always felt that she had passion and drive for the bottom line, educating students. Her passion for Sarasota County is evident in her continued perseverance in making a difference in our district. Her dedication to Phillippe Shores as a school leader provided the school a continued A-rating, a pilot school for co-teaching models for the International Back Laureate Program, a multitude of collaborative relationships with local businesses. We've always reached out and had an abundance of business partners. Beyond her many administrative accomplishments, Dr. Foster has also cultivated a culture of respect at Phillippe Shores. There's collaboration and enthusiasm among her staff. She has always given us the best opportunities to help lead our students in the right direction. Her passion for Sarasota County and moving it forward in an unstable world right now is evident. Dr. Foster would be an awesome leader, and I have every confidence in her moving forward as a leader for superintendent of Sarasota County Schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Tanya Quinn, Fred Klein.
Hello, my name is Tanya Quinn. Having worked for Dr. Foster at Phillippe Shores, I can say firsthand that she knows how to maximize efficiency and lead her teachers to maximum student growth. She is data-driven and knows what it takes to get results. When Dr. Foster was at Phillippe, our ELA scores in third grade were 83% proficient compared to the overall district score of 70%. In addition, Dr. Foster knows the community and has built great relationships with parents and business partners. I've watched the interviews, and it seems that the other candidates' plan for the first 90 days are to listen and learn about the district and the community. One of the candidates plans to bring in a transition team of 60 or so retired people that he knows, and in his words, have been just hanging out playing golf for a few years, to come in and help with the transition. Whereas Dr. Foster already knows the district and knows our strengths and weaknesses, and is ready to hit the ground running from day one. It also seems that other candidates are coming in from districts that were not functioning well at all, and they greatly improve their district, however not to the level of Sarasota's current achievement. We need someone with the skill set to take us from good to the highest level of achievement. I'm going to do what Dr. Foster would do and use a swim sports analogy. We all know how she loves to use those sports analogies. We don't need a coach that can get us from being number 34 to number 20. We need a coach that has the skill set to get us from being a Ryan Lochte to a Michael Phelps. And I believe that Dr. Foster is the one that can help make us number-one district in Florida. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Fred Klein, Sebastian Gershel. Are you Fred Klein?
Yes, I am.
And I just called the next person.
Oh, okay. Good morning. Thank you for having this meeting, considering all the candidates. I thought you did a wonderful job when you picked her for as the interim acting superintendent, and I think that speaks volumes for her as well as you. I was a New York City teacher and administrator for 38 years. I survived. And I moved down here to this wonderful town and encountered, since my granddaughters were going here, encountered Dr. Foster as principal of Phillippe. And as an administrator, I observed all the time, and I observed the school. And it was an incredible experience. The school was run, she didn't really have to do much during the day, because every single person, from teachers to aides to the lunch staff, everybody knew exactly what to do and when to do it. No bells, no structure that could, as a parent, and yet it ran as perfectly as I could see. And she's a wonderful parent. My granddaughter had a graduation party. She graduated from fifth grade, and her daughter was in the same class, so naturally she was there. She stayed for the entire time, talking to parents, talking to the kids, like there was no critical decision coming up soon. So to me, that shows a lot about her personality, her professionalism. She's a wonderful person. I think you would make a good decision, great decision, if you chose her as the next permanent superintendent. You know, as they say, you know, they say, "If it ain't broke, don't fix it." She knows it. She knows everything. She's already on the ground, running the school district. So I strongly support Allison Foster as your next permanent superintendent, and thank you very much for listening.
Thank you so much. Sebastian Gershel and Jennifer Cottrell.
Members of the school board, I'm Sebastian Gershel, a next-year junior at Aruvie High School. Before I begin, I'd like to thank Mr. Duggan and the search firm for the job that they did on Monday with both of the interviews. It was fantastic. As a student, as the only student that was on the advisory committee and is one of the only active students who speaks at and watches these meetings, and looking around today, I think I'm the only student here again, I would like to explain to you why there is only one candidate for superintendent. Throughout this process, only one candidate has expressed themselves clearly and effectively, highlighting their personal and professional experience in relating it to this position. Only one candidate has the right leadership and management experience for multiple sectors. Only one candidate presented the advisory committee with out-of-the-box concrete plans and highlighted the needs of every single student. Only one candidate presented us with their leadership philosophy, and let me tell you, it was right on target for the pivot that this district needs. And after much consideration, again, as a student, as the person here actually spends the most time in a classroom in that desk, that person is Dr. Joe Phillips. During his videos, resume, and committee meeting, he was the only candidate to show the experience, philosophy, passion, and plan needed to get Sarasota Schools to a true A district. Because as he said it, "The A means nothing to a child who can't read, or feels unsafe, or as any other issue." He states the facts as they are and showed that he would put the students before himself. So again, as a student, I encourage you all to vote for Dr. Joe Phillips. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Jennifer Cottrell. And David, and I apologize in advance if I don't, David Russenberg, I believe.
Good afternoon, or good morning, Jennifer Cottrell. As a member on the advisory committee as well, I had the opportunity to sit and listen to all the candidates, watch their interviews, reviewed their resumes. I know the board has already made their decision, so it really doesn't matter what we say here today. But I will tell you, from my experience, when I was first looking at the resumes, I had a couple people in mind that I thought, really, were at the top of my list. But then after going through the process and listening to them speak, that changed dramatically. And I guess my number-one pick and my endorsement would be for Dr. Phillips. I like the way that he articulated his plan. I like the fact that he used the hook and plan. I thought that was a phenomenal way to get with the students. I like the way that he used the word "each" for the student and not "every" and those that you know with that. I mean, that's just a totally different philosophy. He seemed very passionate. He told us the story of how he had a student, one of his children was ESE, and the struggles that he went through, and how he had to go up the chain of command to try to get something done. So he sees what the struggles are that ESE parents go through, and everybody that knows me here knows that my focus is on those ESE students. So I just think that he would bring a tremendous wealth of knowledge to Sarasota County. And like Sebastian said before me, he kind of hit it on the head with, "Doesn't matter if you're an A-rated school if students can't read." So I hope the board really takes some consideration. You really think this through when you're looking at the superintendent, whoever you do choose, and you make sure that you're putting the best interests of the students in mind when you're making that choice today. But thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. David Russenberg, Allison Dietz-Ross.
Hi, my name's David Rosenberg. I'm a 50-year Sarasota resident and happen to know some of you on the board. And my children are basically, I want to say, half-time students in public schools. They attend Cardinal Mooney High School. One just graduated. I'm on the advisory board at Cardinal Mooney High School, so I'm kind of familiar with what goes on, being a 50-year resident. And the number-one concern, I've listened to a lot of the different things, and I think some people lose focus about wanting to please other people. For me, I've been a coach in Sarasota County and for Sarasota County High School, and the number-one thing is the kids. Bottom line, we can try to please everybody we want to, but the bottom line is who's going to do best for the kids. I've happened to know Allison Foster for quite a long period of time. Her husband is my lifelong best friend. There is no better candidate for this position than Allison Foster. She cares about the kids. Her life is devoted to this. She's a graduate of Wake Forest, very good school, not as good as Notre Dame, but a very good school. So, or Texas A&amp;M now. I've got a vested interest in Texas A&amp;M. But if you look at what she could have done, she's devoted her entire life to this. To me, it just doesn't get much better than that. And when you're rock-solid and you have the roots here and you care about the kids, I heard some people talking when we were outside, and I happen to know sports pretty well, so I heard them talk about coaching. And I'll use a Sarasota resident, the best example that I can come to, and I'm ad-libbing now because it's... that I can come to, and I just, I'm ad-libbing now because it threw me off a little what I was going to say, but Urban Meyer lives here. Urban Meyer coached University of Florida and did really, really well for them. And he up and left. And he went to Ohio State where his heart was. And I get that, you, you want to go, but when he got up and left, he left in 2009. University of Florida football team hasn't been the same, and everybody knows that. So, when you've got somebody who's rooted here and is going to stay here, and that's what they want to do, and they're not looking to maybe use this as a stepping stone to leave, that's something really important. And when you guys make a decision, I'd implore you to close your eyes and think about the kids. Don't think about everybody else or anything else political, but think about the kids. And when you open your eyes, I guarantee you, you see Allison Foster the best person leading that. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you so much. Allison Dietz Ross. Mary Ann Dequino-Turl. I probably didn't do a very good job announcing that.
Good morning. My name is Allison Dietz Ross, and I would like to express my support for Dr. Allison Foster for the position of Sarasota County School District Superintendent. Like Dr. Foster, I grew up in Sarasota County and am raising two children here. One graduated from Riverview last year, and one will start Riverview this fall. I have worked in a contract services position with the Kilty Band Highland Dancers for many years, and I feel that I am familiar with the variety of issues that students, parents, and teachers face within our district. During my 11 years as a parent and volunteer at Philippi Shores Elementary, I was privileged to work closely with Dr. Allison Foster when she was principal there. I always felt that Dr. Foster had my family's best interest at heart and that I had a voice in my children's education. Sarasota County is a very unique area, and I feel that Dr. Foster understands what works well for our district. She has worked in our district in various capacities for 26 years and has a rare perspective on the finer points of our education system. She grew up in Sarasota, is raising her family here, and wants her children to benefit from the same excellent educational opportunities that were afforded to her as a student in Sarasota County. She has wonderful ideas about staying on the cutting edge of education while also upholding many time-honored traditions. It is not always easy to find a leader who has dual attributes of creativity and fiscal responsibility, but Dr. Foster absolutely has both. She has earned college degrees in education and business and is well-balanced in each area. She has extremely strong decision-making skills, and after listening to all sides of an issue, can then filter out pertinent ideas to reach a resolution. Dr. Foster possesses a strong work ethic, integrity, a clear vision, and an abiding desire for all children to receive a superior education. I believe Dr. Allison Foster is the right person to unify all the elements necessary to ensure Sarasota County's continued position as an A-rated, superior district in the state of Florida, and that she epitomizes the leadership our district needs to fulfill its mission. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mary Ann Dequino-Turl, Richard Stammer.
Thank you, you said it right, Mrs. Duggan.
I took a little bit of time to read it.
It was good. My name is Mary Ann Dequino-Turl, and I am just here to offer a reminder to the board as the superintendent process is finalized. Your positions are secular, not religious. The founders wrote the Constitution, not the Apostles. They added the Bill of Rights, not the Ten Commandments. Their intent was a nation with freedom from religion, not free, not controlled by religion. They created a democracy, not a theocracy. The purpose for your jobs is to do the very best possible for each child in our, in our county. According to the criteria you established, the only qualified candidate is Terrence Connor. Vote accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Richard Stammer and Jeff Omba.
Yes, thank you, and good morning, Board. I'm pleased to be here today. I'm a 20-year Sarasota resident, having come from Maryland after retiring in child welfare. And so even though I don't have any children or grandchildren in Sarasota County public schools, I really do care about children. Quite frankly, as I was speaking with my partner coming here today, I was thinking, "I would rather be home watching Morning Joe and finding out about the events from yesterday," but, which was a very momentous day. But I feel that I have a responsibility to this community and to all of the children in it, and I want to stress "all." I want to see all children protected in Sarasota County public schools regardless of their race, their, their culture, their background, their gender identification, all of it. They all deserve our respect. I know there will be other folks here who will be talking about the candidates, and with all due respect to the candidates, I sure wish that I didn't have to be here also because we had a fine superintendent, and he is now gone, and so that's why we're here today, and so that is to pass, but I won't forget. And so I am here to, after reviewing all the candidates, I would like to recommend Terrence Connor for superintendent. I feel that he has the most education background, the experience to work with this entire community. I'm not going to go into detail about everything he brings to the plate, you already know that, but I'm sure there will be others here who will, you know, express their deep thoughts on, on Dr. Connor. So, I thank you for your consideration. I know one of the speakers expressed that you've already made your decision. I hope that's not the case, and that you'll be listening to us before a final decision is made. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jeff Omba, Susan LaGreca-Miller.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson and members of the board. In 2012, I was a principal in Clay County, Florida, and we elect our superintendents every four years. We loved our superintendent, Ben Wertham, and so many of us in the school system supported him in his reelection efforts as the incumbent. His challenger that year was a school board member named Charlie Van Zant Jr. One Saturday morning, a fellow principal and I were waving campaign signs for Mr. Wertham in a parking lot when a pickup truck pulled up. It slowed down as it passed us, and the window came down. It was Charlie Van Zant. Signs in hand, we exchanged pleasantries, he drove off. My colleague and I turned to each other and said, "Yikes, if Ben doesn't win, I guess we'll be looking for jobs." But we didn't really know Charlie Van Zant. We didn't understand that after winning the election in 2012, he'd come in with a listening ear and a compassionate heart. We already knew that he was a great strategic thinker and decisive leader from his years on the school board, but we hadn't seen him in the role of superintendent. He didn't blame us for supporting our boss, as loyalty is a trait he highly values and he possesses himself. I watched this innovating, engaging, and non-traditional superintendent accomplish great things. I remember watching him at one of my Florida Association of School Administrator events as he worked a crowd of legislators and decision-makers. In that moment, I realized my understanding of what makes a great superintendent needed to expand. In addition to leading your people, you need someone who can interface with those who control the purse strings and advocate for your school system. Charlie had the experience and connections to lobby for an additional $1 million in earmarked funding to support his high school Career Academy initiative. When Charlie's term was complete, it was a blow to many of us in the school district, and the transition that followed was not the same we had experienced in 2012. The new superintendent came in like a hurricane, making abrupt moves and establishing dominance over all those who had supported Mr. Van Zant's reelection efforts. In the final days of my contract, I found myself stationed in the warehouse doing inventory. I can still tell you how many quarter-inch PVC elbows we had. Somewhere out there exists a photo of me on a forklift I didn't belong on, but hopefully I'm now past the statute of limitations for an OSHA violation. For those of you who might have some anxiety about the idea of Charlie Van Zant possibly stepping in as your next superintendent, I want to assure you that it's not what you think. Yes, he's a conservative guy, and he makes no apologies, that he'll mind your finances and he'll protect your kids, but he has a love of people, both students and staff, and he leads with compassion. I look forward to watching the board vote this morning. I wish nothing but the best for all of you in the Sarasota County schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan LaGreca-Miller, Ben Horn.
It's actually Susan Beck. I maybe don't know my own name, but I just. Good morning, I'm Susan LaGreca-Beck. I'm a parent of two elementary-school-aged children and have owned a business in Sarasota for over 15 years. Having personally experienced Dr. Foster's leadership during her tenure as the principal of a school I specifically moved to, to be districted for, I witnessed firsthand her transformative impact. She fostered an inclusive and nurturing environment, instilling a love for learning and growth among students, parents, and teachers alike. Given the turmoil our school system has faced over the past five years, we need a superintendent who can bring stability, inspire trust, and implement changes. Dr. Foster will consistently uphold the utmost ethical standards, ensuring that personnel decisions are not made capriciously and without regard for the well-being of the organization, avoiding undue influence from a vocal minority. Dr. Foster's track record and intimate familiarity with our community uniquely position her to tackle these challenges head-on and create a positive future for our district. Her lifelong connection to Sarasota, extensive experience in education, and passion for our community make her an exceptional candidate who can lead us towards a brighter future. Thank you.
Thank you. Ben Horn, Dr. Jill Lewis Spector.
Hi, good morning. Thank you so much for the opportunity. I'm here to express support for Charlie Van Zant. I've been in education for over 20 years myself. My wife is also in education. Our oldest just graduated from New York University. We value education at our home very much. And so, our families is, we've actually been friends with Charlie for, for 40 years. Our families go way back. We walked through life with him as he lost his mom at a young age, he walked through us as we lost our father. And Charlie's got a unique background, unique experience as retired lieutenant colonel. He has served our country, he has served the students of, of Clay County. He's been faithful to his friends and family and faithful to students of Clay County for many, many, many years. But I guess what I want to do today is just share a little bit about Charlie that a lot of people don't realize, and that is, he is faithful to serve the people who are underprivileged. And he has a history, we could literally bring dozens and dozens of people here today to speak on how he has affected their family personally. He, at, at his church, he oversees the ministry that reaches out to the widows. And when I say that he takes that serious, he takes it serious because my mom is one of the ones that he reaches out to. He has spent his own personal money to help those who are in need, but not only to the widows, but also literally to, to orphans and to the underprivileged, and starting various programs that have helped underprivileged students and helping send them to, to trade school and helping them, people that honestly, that our system didn't want, that he has stepped down and reached to come alongside them. And that's a side that a lot of people don't talk about. That's a side that a lot of people haven't seen, the compassionate side that doesn't just speak about wanting to educate people, but, but willing to come alongside and do the, the tough work, to do the dirty work that the news cameras and newspapers don't, that they don't report. And so, again, this morning, Dr. Foster sounds like a wonderful, wonderful person. And so I know that sometimes it's tough when you have somebody from the outside, but as an educator myself, when it's tough, when, when change happens, sometimes that change is good, when someone's able to come in and bring a unique and different perspective to take a school or to take a county forward to that next phase in their history. So, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Dr. Jill Lewis Spector. Next, after that is Carla Reynolds.
Good morning, Board. First of all, I would like to thank the board for giving the public several opportunities to meet and hear all the finalists for the position of school superintendent. Since moving to Florida just two and a half years ago, I have witnessed dreadful, even probably unconstitutional things happening to the state's public schools. Between state legislature rulings, public outcries over false claims about what teachers are teaching in our schools, and performance shenanigans by some state leaders who campaign on parents' rights and then deny them to most parents, chaos has reigned, especially at public school board meetings. It's time for us to choose calm over chaos, sanity over sanctimoniousness, reason over self-righteousness. For Sarasota's public schools to accomplish this, the board must choose for our superintendent the one candidate who does not appear to have extreme views or lack of qualifications for such an important position in our district. Terrence Connor will not be criticized for being too unfamiliar with public school classrooms, too preoccupied with churching students, or too limited in experiences beyond Sarasota. He will be a reasonable choice. Parents, residents, organizations, seniors, students, teachers have written the board to express their opinions on the candidates. Some of us have even written the press. We've sat through board workshops to view the narrowing down of initial candidates to the final four. Sounds like March Madness in process. We've observed lengthy board meetings, watched citizen advisory committee meetings, and attended a candidate's night open house. This has been a painful, exhausting process. I'm sure it has been for the board as well. We're at the end of it. I just ask the board to be reasonable in deciding who will lead our schools, to set your politics and political ambitions aside, and to give our community the obvious choice, one that won't keep us up at night or keep us nipping at your heels to do better. Please choose Terrence Connor. Thank you.
Thank you. Carla Reynolds and Dr. Theoni Subli.
Hi, good morning. I'm Carla Reynolds, and I'm assistant principal at Sarasota Suncoast Academy. I'm here to represent Dr. Foster. I know her from two different schools. I was a teacher at Toledo Blade Elementary School for five years as she was assistant principal, and she was principal. I loved her so much that I followed her to Philippi Shores, and eight years I got to experience, a wonderful experience for eight years with her as principal. And I'm also a parent. My students went to school when she was principal, and I believe that Dr. Foster is the best candidate for superintendent. And I, as a parent, my children thrived in her school. She's very fair, she's very inclusive, not only with her students, but with the teachers as well. I always felt like I could go and talk to her about anything, and she was very fair and open-minded. She, her primary focus is student achievement. We were at A-rated schools as well, and she loves to close those achievement gaps and does a really nice job teaching and leading teachers and students as well with that. Maximizing student potential is a plus for her as well. She's a native to Florida. I think she's done a fabulous job being active superintendent recently as well, and we've always had a great relationship with Suncoast Academy, and I would love to continue that relationship as well, working together, and I think she's a great person for the job. So, I hope you consider her. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Dr. Theoni Subli and Anne Marie Keen.
Thank you for opening public comment this morning to us as we've all been participating in the search for our next superintendent. I'm a data-driven, data-driven person. I just like to look at the data, and that's where I typically make my decisions. And the way that we evaluate our teachers and our administrators is using evaluation tools that are very complex and complicated. They are filled with standards and indicators. People have to be trained on how to use those evaluation tools in order to evaluate our administrators and our teachers because of the complexities within them. And what happens at the end of the evaluation is that it churns out a lot of data, and people like me like to study that data. And when I look at all of the information that has come in based on these candidates, there's one clear candidate that rises to the top for me, and that's Terrence Connor. The data is there to support. When I look at the evaluation tool that we will use as a county to evaluate his performance as the superintendent, and I compare that to his VITA or to his resume, I can see how those two items correlate with each other. We already let go of a highly effective superintendent, for whatever reason. Many of us can come to conclusions on those reasons, but that is behind us now, and we have to look forward. I'm looking for another superintendent that will be rated as highly qualified. We have our, so many- We have our, so many schools in this county that are A-rated schools with our A-rated teachers, and they are highly qualified teachers, and I'm looking for that highly qualified superintendent. When I look at Terrence Connor's resume, I see the experience that he had in the ninth largest school district in the country. The ninth largest school district in the country happens to be just north of us in Hillsborough County. And the effectiveness that he had in being able to raise the standards for his teachers and for his students. So, thank you for opening up the opportunity for us to speak today. The data speaks for itself, and for me, the data speaks towards Terrence Connor as our next superintendent. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anne Marie Keen. Amanda Gilliland.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Anne Marie Keen. As a former teacher, administrator, educational consultant, and parent, I urge you to vote for the only qualified superintendent candidate whose name is Terrence Connor. Mr. Connor has the breadth of experience as a teacher, principal, curriculum development specialist, and academic advisor, and is deputy superintendent of the third-largest school district in Florida, Hillsborough County, which encompasses 33 cities and towns, including Tampa, the third-largest city in the state. Mr. Connor can definitely handle Sarasota County's school administrative responsibilities. There is no doubt in my mind. You're not going to like what I'm going to say next. I urge you not to fall prey to the influences of General Michael Q. Flynn on this school committee board, and reject any candidate that he proposes. General Flynn is a fraud as well as a traitor to our country. For example, he accepted $45,000 from Putin to give a speech in Moscow at the 10th anniversary of Russia Today, which is Putin's propaganda machine before the 2016 presidential election. Flynn is not the kind of man you want to have as your mentor, and endorsement from him is not something to tout. So, once again, I urge you to vote for Terrence Connor. And if you need to see a picture of General Flynn with Mr. Putin, it's right here.
Thank you. Amanda Gilliland, and then Katrina Ward.
Good morning. My name is Amanda Gilliland, and I am a Sarasota County resident, realtor, small business owner, and most importantly, the parent of two Sarasota County children. The oldest is a rising first grader in Sarasota County Schools. I am here today to encourage you to not consider Mr. Van Zant for any position in Sarasota County Schools under any circumstances. In the community survey, the final prompt asked about the skills and characteristics that the next superintendent must have to be successful. At the top of the list of our community's responses is that the next superintendent must be apolitical with an absolute focus on what is best for students. While all candidates have shown that they value what is best for students, their way of achieving this will differ. There were many interesting ideas presented during the interviews. Through the hours of interviews, each candidate managed to stay apolitical except for Mr. Van Zant. The first paragraph of Mr. Van Zant's cover letter contains his first mention of his beliefs, and that sentence could have been equally effective without the mention of his conservative values, but he chose to include them anyways. To quote Mr. Van Zant, "And I believe that I possess the professional ethics and conservative values that would benefit Sarasota County Schools." Professional ethics is a widely understood term that would cover why this community would trust Mr. Van Zant to make decisions for our children. But the purposeful addition of conservative values turns this sentence and Mr. Van Zant himself into something that the community explicitly does not want. The first sentence of the second paragraph of Mr. Van Zant's cover letter reads, "As a proponent of parental choice, I am encouraged to see traditional and conservative values returning to Florida schools." Here, he begins with a political buzzword, and then again uses the phrase conservative values. And the cover letter is just our first introduction to Mr. Van Zant's politics, which continued through the community advisory committee interviews as well as the open house. To further consider Mr. Van Zant for any Sarasota County Schools position will be to completely and totally disregard the Sarasota community who have explicitly told you that they want an apolitical superintendent. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Katrina Ward. Marjorie Peters.
Good morning. My name is Katrina Ward, and I am a 32-year retired employee of Sarasota County Schools. I started as an aide. I became a teacher. I became a guidance counselor. I became a K-12 guidance counselor trainer, and I ended my career as the supervisor who was in charge of school choice. I'm also a parent who had all of her children come through Sarasota County Schools, and I think they received a top-notch education. I now have a grandson who is coming through, and he is an energetic sponge, and I'm looking forward to that experience as well. I want to personally thank Robin Marinelli for selecting me to be a part of the advisory committee for the selection of our new incoming superintendent, whomever that may be. What I will say is that I also thank the team of MacPherson and Jacobson, I do believe. I want to just thank them because I think they did a really nice job of developing and implementing the process that we use. We were able to, the participants were able to generate their own questions, ask the questions that they felt necessary to be asked of the candidate at the time, so I really did enjoy the process. And I think the process will definitely do what you all were hoping to achieve as an outcome, so that part was good. Finally, I just have one simple request, and I'm not going to name who my, I'm not going to state who my top choice was, because I think as Jennifer said, you all are going to make your decision, and so we all know that. But what I am going to say is that as you make your decision, I want to leave you with a mnemonic, and my mnemonic is DIE. Why am I using that mnemonic? That mnemonic? I'm using that mnemonic because diversity, all students come from different backgrounds, and each of those students, their backgrounds should be celebrated. They should be tolerated, and they should be acknowledged. Inclusion. Each student, every parent, and every community member must be visible. They have to feel like they're being seen, and every student, each student must be accounted for through inclusion. Finally, equity. Each student must have access to every program that we offer in this great district.
Thank you so much. Marjorie Peter. Linda Weinreich.
I'm still Marjorie Peter, resident since '87, and the parent of three students who've graduated the district. I'm glad I attended the citizen advisory committee candidate interviews on Monday. I'm not going to devote much time discussing Dr. Foster or Mr. Van Zant. You have worked with Dr. Foster for several months and have a bird's-eye view of her strengths and weaknesses, far beyond any input that I, as a layman, could provide. As for Mr. Van Zant, I'm sorry to say I only can conclude that his participation may have been a desire on your part to have an even number of candidates. When asked questions by the committee, he often evaded answering by reminiscing about working on Black Hawk helicopters or promising to attend spaghetti dinners. I just don't think he took it very seriously, and that was insulting. After watching the videos and reading the resumes of Mr. Connor and Dr. Phillips, I was very intrigued to meet them. My concern is that I think Dr. Phillips interviews very well because perhaps he does it frequently. A clue we looked for in the business world when I was working was, how often has this applicant job hopped? Since reaching Florida, he has worked for less than a year as chief information officer in Volusia County, and has just completed his first year in Broward, and now he's ready to make the big hop to Sarasota. Recall, we heard advice from our own consultants how important it is for a leader to be in place for several years in order for any plans to have impact. Contrast his record to Mr. Connor's. From 2004 to 2017, he rose through the ranks in Duval County from teacher, assistant principal to principal. He moved to Clay County to be chief of secondary education and chief academic officer. And since April of 2020, he has worked as deputy superintendent and chief academic officer in Hillsborough. Don't your teachers expect you to hire someone with a demonstrated track record? The district is too complex a district to be a training camp for Dr. Phillips. He may be an excellent addition to our technology and information staff, and I urge you to consider that, but I think your teachers are looking for an educator, every child, every day. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Linda Weinreich. Elizabeth Bornstein.
I'd like to thank the Board especially for the process that they've used for this. There's been many opportunities for people to get familiar with what the goals of the Board are for the school system, and also to meet these people, to hear about them. If you don't watch the Florida Channel, I watch the Florida Channel Education all the time. You can hear board meetings, workshops, all kinds of things if you just, you know, if you want to do this at home, you don't have to come down here. Now, I do come and speak because I'm kind of an outsider in a way. I have not personally, well, I had grandnieces and grandnephew in the school system for a short time, but I'm a person who doesn't have children, but who has worked with children all my life, who loves children, who has a great desire for them to excel and to have very high standards in life. And I believe that if you want a school to succeed, you have to have high standards. You cannot aim for low standards, okay? And, you know, all of these candidates you've presented are, have been vetted thoroughly. They're all highly recommended to start with. Some of the differences may be in personality. As an outsider, one of the things when I went to the meet and greet that I did was I made it my business to try to watch their body language, to watch them handle people who some were hanging around too long and trying to, you know, preach to them. Others understood meet and greet was just to get familiar. I watched how they treated their own family members, their respect, and I observed their language in many ways. I think I ended up feeling the most comfortable with Mr. Van Zant because of his military background. I'm a military brat. I was, my dad was a lieutenant when I was born, and he was a lieutenant colonel. When I went into my sophomore year of college, we're a melting pot. I was in 44 states before I graduated high school. People who are in the military have to learn to get along with everyone, and they do. They learn to enjoy meeting people from different cultures and backgrounds and with different goals and objectives. So, I want to say Mr. Van Zant does very well in those areas, but also, I am a Christian, and I do not believe that God intended us for to leave our faith at home or to park it in a building. We are the church. We are the people who are supposed to show love and kindness to others. I've heard a lot of things in school board meetings that I have not liked, and one thing I'll leave with you is, you know, juveniles blame and shame. They call people names. They say a lot of nasty things all the time, and I was taught if you can't say something nice, don't say it at all, okay? Adults take responsibility. They deal with where you fail, where, how we need to improve, and what the goals should be for the future. So, I want to commend you on the process, and I leave the decision to your choice. I know I'm leaning toward Mr. Van Zant, but that's me.
Thank you so much. Elizabeth Bornstein, and then after that, we're going to quickly, if everyone just maintain in your seats, we're going to quickly switch out the battery and the microphone, so, go ahead.
Greetings. I'm Elizabeth Bornstein, parent of a student and a volunteer in the district. Thank you for the opportunity to attend the interviews and meet and greet Monday. May you, the Board, and our new superintendent heal our fractures as a district and ensure all Sarasota County School students have the opportunity to lead productive, responsible, and healthful lives, and in the process prioritize academic achievement for all students, reinvigorate and sustain our A district, support, develop, and retain highly effective principals, teachers, and staff, and involve parents and a supportive community. After careful review and consideration, it is absolutely clear Terrence Connor is the most qualified for the superintendent position and should be offered the job today. May the five of you work together to support our new leader and all together represent all students every day. Poetry is healing, makes us think, and often marks new beginnings. A New Day's Lyric by Amanda Gorman. May this day we come together, mourning we come to mend, withered we come to weather, torn we come to tend, battered we come to better. Tethered by this year of yearning, we are learning that though we weren't ready for this, we have been readied by it. We steadily vow that no matter how we are weighed down, we must always pave a way forward. This hope is our door, our portal. Even if we never get back to normal, someday we can venture beyond it to leave the known and take the first steps. So, let us not return to what was normal, but reach toward what is next. What was cursed, we will cure. What was plagued, we will prove pure. Where we tend to argue, we will try to agree. Those fortunes we foreswore, now the future we foresee. Where we weren't aware, we are now awake. Those moments we missed, and now these moments we make. The moments we meet, and our hearts once all together beaten, now all together beat. Come, look up with kindness yet, for even solace can be sourced from sorrow. We remember not just for the sake of yesterday, but to take on tomorrow. We heed this old spirit in a new day's lyric. In our hearts we hear it, for old lang syne, my dear, for old lang syne. Be bold, sang time this year, be bold, sang time. For when you honor yesterday, tomorrow you will find. Know what we fought, need not for God, nor for none. It defines us, binds us as one. Come over, join this day just begun, for wherever we come together, we will forever overcome. Kudos Amanda Gorman for this wisdom. This is our day as we overcome, restore hope and trust, and forge a new path ahead. Thank you, Board.
Thank you very much. And if everyone just can stay in their seats, we're going to swap out the mic real quick and keep on moving. Thank you, Jamal. Next, we have Rana Benzini and Sheila Van Ness. If we can have quiet in the chamber so we can hear the speaker, thank you.
Oh, good morning, everyone. Here we are. We've arrived at the moment of truth. You all must be exhausted, and I really appreciate you having opened us to interviews and so forth and so on. I have to say, I am experiencing a moment of deja vu. It was not that long ago that we were all gathered here to choose a new superintendent after a very tumultuous period. Here we go again. After Dr. Aspen was chosen, I sent him an email questioning whether I should offer my congratulations or my condolences. Sadly, it turned out to be the latter. I sincerely hope that I don't feel I have to send a similar email to whomever you choose, but I'm no longer surprised where two people can look at the same people, read the same resume, and come to die a resume, and come to diametrically opposite opinions. So no matter who you choice, choose, you know you're going to disappoint a lot of people. I join those who will support of Terrence Connor. Other people have articulated the reasons why, so I will not go over them. I hope it's your choice, but all of us will be willing to live with whomever you choose, and let's hope we can do the best for the students in our system. Thank you.
Thank you. Sheila Van Ness, Richard Brinson.
Good morning, Board. Thanks very much for offering the public these opportunities. Appreciate it. My name is Dr. Sheila Van Ness, and I'm a lifelong educator and a sociologist. So I tend to take a larger view, an overview, if you will, of the school board and the school district. It's a very large and complex operation, as you well know. And I think you have three fine candidates here to choose from. And I think, I want to say something about the longevity issue that you brought up earlier. We have a very short lifespan on many of these superintendents. And understand that the laws are going to change. There are going to be court cases with some of the legislation that has been passed recently. So there will be some changes that will occur over the next few years. The thing that I want to say, we don't want to have somebody that's going to be here for a year and a half or two years and be gone. So this is, that makes your decision extremely important. I think something ought to be said about Dr. Phillips. Dr. Phillips became an educator later. He was forced to change career paths because of a war injury that completely pulled the rug out from under his life plan. But that does not mean that he's just lightly going through education. As a parent, he has experienced, as you know, difficulties with his own children, and he has a sensitivity to the importance of diversity issues, which is important. He is data-driven. He's very interested in each individual child being accepted and working from where the child is, what do they need. He uses the notion of what is the hook that will make the child want to continue in education? And that can, that hook can be different for different children. So what does a school offer an individual child that makes them want to come to, to school and to complete their education? What can be done to make it a good, safe environment? He has a plan to work with safety at all levels. First, the safety of the schools and the classrooms, and then finally, the safety of the emotional well-being of the child.
Thank you so much. Richard Brinson, Melissa Pekandi.
My name's Richard Brinson. Thank you for the opportunity to address you all. I'm different than a lot of people in the room. I'm seeing merit on both sides of all the controversial issues. I see both sides of the arguments. I agree with the far right on some. I agree with the far left on some. On the majority, I'm dead set in this big gray area. So, but with that said, I'm going to be a little bit blunt here. I read 275 pages of citizens, of stakeholder comments. I got an overwhelming message from those, that this community is ready for stability and to get politics out of it. Unfortunately, I thought that Mr. Van Zant sent a clear message when he included a recommendation from, from General Flynn. That, to me, says that he either ignored the input from, either didn't read it, didn't care enough to read the comments from the stakeholders, or he didn't care what they thought. So I would have to exclude him. I also disliked the way he talked about, in Clay County, how he talked about taking over the schools, when we took over the schools in Clay County. I don't want to take over of our schools here. Sometimes I think this board wants controversy. If you want controversy, pick Mr. Van Zant. If you want what's right for the community, please exclude him. Moving on, my background is technology and mathematics. I was skeptical of Dr. Phillips at first because one thing I learned in my career is that technology isn't the answer to every problem. I tried to use technology places where it, where I shouldn't have. He seems to be very good at acknowledging that. He had some innovative ideas. I was really blown away by a lot of the things he said. Lot of them are unproven. They're unconventional. He thinks outside the box. That scares me a little bit. But I personally benefited in my upbringing, and my children also, from some innovative, new experimental, not experimental, but some pilot programs that turned out to be very successful. So I have a lot of respect for him, and I think he'd be an amazing choice. Dr. Foster and Mr. Connor, I think, have got incredible qualifications. Other people have spoken about those. I would be very comfortable with either one of those. I think those are both very safe choices, and, and I think especially with Dr. Foster, it'd be a smooth transition. She's very well entrenched in the district already. So I think that'd be the smoothest and give us the best continuity. So thank you for your consideration, and I wish you the best of luck making a tough decision.
Thank you so much. Melissa Pekandi, Catherine Gladine.
Board members, thank you all for your hard work in the superintendent search. I would like to voice my support for Mr. Van Zant and, secondly, Dr. Phillips. Mr. Van Zant has invaluable leadership experience in the military and as a well-loved superintendent. One thing that really stood out to me is that he described his superintendent, this superintendent position as a calling, not another job or stepping stone in his career. Although he may not be as smooth and polished as others that look like Gavin Newsom, I find him genuine and have heard he was the only candidate to freely reach out his hand for a firm welcoming handshake at the meet and greet. He was also so transparent as to verbally share his personal cell number on public video when interviewing before the community panel. I loved his focus on phonics and strong communication. He would be a great leader for Sarasota. Mr. Phillips would be in my number two with his very concrete strategies and pothood and kick the tires attitude. He also seems to have a true heart for the ESC community and organization. Both Mr. Van Zant and Dr. Phillips show excellent leadership skills, integrity, accountability, looking to better student outcomes, enhance reading in all grade levels, and view parents as an important component in student success. I sincerely hope that you do not choose Mr. Connor. A few reasons I do not agree with choosing Mr. Connor are, number one, his association with the Florida Board Association. He was brought forth in Osceola County as a superintendent candidate, but the woke FSBA is endorsing him as a candidate. I think we may need to take a second look. Our district is trying to move away from that organization and what it stands for. That organization works with Equality Florida and has an agenda that is not consistent with Sarasota County voters or parental rights. The NSBA was the parent organization of the FSBA, and the NSBA was the one that called parents domestic terrorists. The Sarasota County voters have spoken and want nothing to do with Team Jane Goodwin and the SBA. Number two, Mr. Connor touts his membership in the woke organization Chiefs for Change, whom advocates for culturally responsive teaching, implicit bias training for educators. I don't think we need to go down that road again. They also allude to the fact that there are prejudices that need systemically dismantled based on race and class. This is not congruent with the Sarasota County beliefs. America is not systemically racist, and our systems do not need dismantled. We do not need this woke ideology coming from the top down. Number three, Mr. Connor stated in his interview that he wanted 80% of his staff trained in youth mental health first aid. Youth mental health first aid is a woke program that demands a person trained in mental health first aid affirm LGBTQ beliefs and use requested pronouns, no matter if they are comfortable with doing so or not. This is forced speech. To demand forced speech from Sarasota County teachers and staff goes against their religion and their conviction is unacceptable. Number four, his wife comes with some questionable ethical history. Please see the article I shared in my email. Number five, and finally, according to Mr. Edwards and his own words, if he is not a teacher, that disqualifies him from this superintendent search. Just a reminder in case Mr. Edwards picks him as his top pick. Also, if a proclaimed woke school board member endorses him, don't walk, but run awa. As far as Dr. Foster goes, maybe he's in a different district.
Thank you. Catherine Gladine, I'm sorry if I'm not pronouncing that correctly, and then Lisa Scher.
That's all right. I am Catherine Gladine. I am a Christian mother of two. I'm also a nurse and a business owner. I have lived here for two years now. I moved here from San Diego, California, so I am trying to escape the woke ideology. I am here to endorse Mr. Van Zant. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Lisa Scher, Caitlin Mc.
Lisa Scher, mother of a Sarasota public school student, one of the co-founders of Supporter Schools. As the director of Supporter Schools, I've been interviewed by local, state, national, and international media about the situation in Florida, particularly as it relates to education. We are known for extremism. The Southern Poverty Law Center recently listed 89 ethnic-based groups as extremists, including Moms for Liberty, which was founded by our [inaudible]. I, for one, am tired of this, and I know I'm not the only one. Dr. Aspen's parting words to this board were, "Got to get rid of the politics." The parents and stakeholders of this district want the board to bring the emphasis back to [inaudible] and away from the culture wars and gross political [inaudible] education. We have the opportunity to right this ship now and move it forward with the selection of our new super. I've read the resumes of each candidate, watched their videos, read their 100-day plans, attended advisory community interviews, went to the community meeting at Pine View, and watched the school board interviews on video. I've done my external research, and the choice could not be more clear. Mr. Van Zant is a hard no. During my professional career, I've read thousands of resumes, but I have to say, I've never received a recommendation for an applicant from a convicted criminal, as Mr. Van Zant provided to the board from Mr. Flynn. Mr. Van Zant's past history in Clay County and his interviews make it abundantly clear that he is unfit to serve this county as superintendent. Allison Foster simply does not have the experience yet required for the job, although she is clearly an asset to the school district, and I hope that the board will continue to make use of her talents and give her the continued opportunity for growth. Mr. Phillips does not have the education background, experience, and depth required to lead this district. While he may be an excellent chief, chief information officer, and I think you should consider hiring him for that role, we can't afford to offer him a job training experiences as superintendent. By a wide margin, Mr. Connor is the best candidate for the job of superintendent. During his interview with the board, he showed a depth of knowledge that by far exceeded that of the other three candidates. Of the top three contenders for superintendent, his experience as a teacher, vice principal, principal, chief academic officer, and assistant superintendent makes him the only qualified candidate to lead Sarasota County schools. I urge the board to select Terrence Connor as the next superintendent for the Sarasota County Public Schools, and thank you for allowing me to speak today.
Thank you. Kate McGill, Jennifer Reichart.
Hi, my name is Caitlin McGill. I currently have four children in Sarasota County schools. They're seven, eight, 10, and 11. One thing I always remind my children, that leaders are not born, they're made, and they're made with hard work. And I think that our district needs a proven leader, which Dr. Foster has clearly done. And what better person to represent our county than a native who has been in our system for 26 years? She's been a teacher, a principal, a superintendent, and she has children in our district. Let me tell you, there isn't a person who will fight harder for our children than a mom herself. I want to take a moment to talk about Dr. Children, Dr. Foster's children. They are the, they have spent, I've spent personally a great deal of time with them, and they're the kindest, most respectful kids you will meet. They are so sweet. They're just wonderful kids, and if she can continue bringing those values to our kids in Sarasota County, we will be better as a whole, and I can promise you that. Obviously, our children's learning is of the utmost importance, but I think it's equally important to have kind, respectful humans in this crazy world we're living in, and I think that that's a value of hers, and I really respect that and appreciate that. And I can speak for myself that I hope that when you make your decision, you choose somebody that has been in our county for so long and has seen multiple roles and will continue to do a great job. And I think that we need your help to get her in the position so she can bring accountability and stability back into our schools and our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Reichart, Ally Miller.
I am here today in support of the board and the consulting group for the outstanding job done in the search to find our next superintendent. I haven't been super involved in this sort of setting, but I have thoroughly enjoyed this process. I'm sure that it has been many long hours. I spent long hours listening and attending some of the meetings. I had the pleasure of meeting each one of the candidates, and I truly believe that any one of them is going to be a positive impact for our district. However, I'm also here in support of our ESC families. I am a mom of a child with learning challenges going into the third grade, and I'm very, very concerned about his future and the future of our community here in Sarasota County. The, the only candidate that really built my confidence was Dr. Phillips. Many people here today have spoken of why, why that is, but I really believe he's going to be the only one that can make real and meaningful change. He provided real, real [inaudible] what he would do immediately to make a course for our ESC students. Which I can't believe that nobody else brought this up, but the Orton-Gillingham Reading Program, which over and over in the interviews, I heard about the lack of phonics in our reading program here, and that Orton-Gillingham program is going to address that immediately. And I believe that he would implement that right away. And everybody knows that no, no student can move on with confidence and be successful in life if they cannot read. His, his each-student philosophy would bring the change our district desperately needs for each student. Thank you.
Thank you. Ally Miller, Kia Brand, or Kia, forgive me.
My name is Ally Miller. I have two children who attend Philippi Shores Elementary. I'm on the executive board of the PTO at Philippi, serving in the capacity of president-elect. I'm here today to endorse Dr. Allison Foster as our next superintendent. When I met Dr. Foster, it was on a tour at Philippi that my sister attended with me, as she is a first-grade teacher in Hillsborough County. She happens to work at the number-one rated school in Hillsborough Elementary. Very quickly, she realized what an amazing school Philippi was and how Dr. Foster was a great leader. She was so impressed by the amazing teachers and our beautiful school with so much technology. I was impressed, too, but I'm not the expert. My sister is. And she left that day feeling so inspired with so many great ideas to take back to her school. And getting to know Dr. Foster over the years, I have seen firsthand what a goal-oriented visionary she is. She's always had goals at the PTO meetings with plans on how we could help her execute her vision. She treats all families with such a high level of customer service and making your voice truly feel heard. Philippi is such a unique school that I feel embodies Sarasota as we serve families from all over the county through the School Choice Program. We have buses that come from the Newtown neighborhood. We have an ESOL student body where Dr. Foster held meetings specifically for those families with a translator so they would not be left out of information. And we have families that could easily send their kid to the most expensive private schools, but they choose not to because they know the excellent education that is provided at Philippi because of Dr. Foster. During COVID, many of my friends who did not attend Philippi but other schools in our district went to private schools due to the masking and overall uncertainty. When I made the decision to keep my child at Philippi, I had such a sense of calm and trust because I knew our leader, Dr. Foster. I knew I could trust her to do what was best for the students and teachers, and the year was a success. She delivered. We had an amazing year. Our kids excelled. The teachers were happy. We had record-breaking fundraising for the PTO. I want that feeling for all parents in our district. Looking to the future, I know I speak for so many families today who want a superintendent they know they can trust. with proven results right here in our district. She walked the halls of our schools. She's been a teacher in our classrooms. I'm an executive recruiter. So I joked with her when she took the role of HR during such a challenging time when staffing was so difficult. But as per usual, she impressed me with her ability to think outside the box and recruit and retain teachers. She pushed herself and her team to get position-filled, even going on the news to promote their hiring efforts. Again, more results produced by Dr. Foster. In a time where there was so much distrust in public education and where our teachers feel so discouraged, there is not a better morale boost for them or a statement to the public than we are hiring one of our own, someone who knows the district and community inside and out, someone we can all trust. Dr. Foster will deliver the results for the Sarasota County schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Kia Brand and Jessica Thompson.
You had it right the first time. My name is Kaia Brand. I'm not here today because I'm a staunch liberal or a staunch conservative. I'm here because I'm a parent of a student that attends one of our Title I schools in Sarasota County. I'm also a volunteer in our classrooms, working with teachers, with admin, helping to prepare for things like award ceremonies or school dances, other parents with admin helping to...sorry. With other parents as the president of parent involvement, and with the principal as part of the school advisory council. All these different positions give me many different lenses to look at the district through and get a good picture of what our teachers, admin, and parents are saying, what they'd like, and what we need in a new superintendent. I had the opportunity and pleasure of attending the superintendent candidate interviews with the board members on Monday. I spent all day sitting in this room, mostly by myself, and listening while the board asked each candidate the same questions. Sitting in the room with each candidate and board gave me a unique opportunity. I got a feel for what their relationship might be, hear conversations when mics and cameras were off, and watch expressions and body language when candidates were giving answers. I saw how the board reacted when the candidates were giving their answers, the nodding along, the side glances, the looking down, and sometimes the puzzled looks on their faces. All four candidates bring something to the table. Mr. Connor, the current deputy superintendent and chief academic officer in Hillsborough, has extensive experience in starting as a science teacher and working his way up to his current position. He spoke about the success that he's brought in bringing testing scores up and reading literacy scores. He also spoke about the budget plan and how adjustments might be made for HB1 and how our Title I schools need the resources. He has also worked with districts with the same size or larger than Sarasota County. Dr. Foster, being the interim superintendent, brings experience to the position, but she's been in that position for only four months. If she'd been the district's top choice, she would have been on their top choice when they were looking for who they wanted to interview. Dr. Phillips does bring a lot to the table, but I think in a different role. When I heard his interview, it was a lot about the data. It does not give me confidence that he would be looking for more than just the data. Mr. Van Zant does bring a lot, a lot of politics. Mr. Van Zant also brings having lost twice when running for the position of superintendent in Clay County. He also wants to bring his friends into our administrative positions as part of his transition team. None of those things are anything that need to be brought into Sarasota County. Thank you.
Thank you. Jessica Thompson, Michelle Posey.
Good morning. I'm Jessica Thomason, and I'm the parent of two children in Sarasota County Public Schools. I have attended every single superintendent town hall search. I attended all the committee advisory interviews yesterday and then last night fell asleep to your interviews. So I've listened to everything, and I also requested about six days ago the results of the stakeholder survey, which was not shared until I asked for it, which was sort of a bummer, and I hope that you all got a chance to read all of that. I know it's very long, but in case you didn't, just a reminder, someone already said it, but the very first thing on their consensus was they wanted someone a political. I wasn't even going to talk about Van Zant because I couldn't imagine him getting a single supporter, but just to let you know, I also watched the Collier County interview on my own. I didn't read an article. I listened to the whole thing. The biggest thing that concerned me actually is that he's not for a referendum. And right now, we benefit from a referendum in Sarasota County and have for years. That brings in seventy-one million dollars. That pays for instructional hours, and that's absolutely not okay. The other thing that really rubbed me the wrong way is that he wanted to bring in not a transitional team, that's fine, whatever, but he did say that he'd need to keep a couple of his buddies on because they need a job with the FRS. Now, I left my job with the FRS this year, the Florida Retirement System, so that I could advocate for my kid and be here at these meetings instead of at work, so I don't get a pension, and I have a huge pay cut, and that seriously bothered me a lot. Anyway, I'll calm down and check my time. What I do want to say is this, I came into this really expecting to support a certain candidate, and that was Mr. Connor, and I still think he would be good. I really do. If he is chosen, I will be totally supportive. There's a lot to like about him. But I will say that in watching the committee meetings, and I hope that all of you got a chance, not just to read the feedback you get, but to actually watch it yourselves, he was the only person who answered the questions, all of them, including questions about diversity, about history being taught in schools. I went to the community meet and greet, and I stood there and I asked him things, and he can tell who's liberal and who's conservative. And he was talking to everybody at the same time, and he never changed his answers based on who he was talking to. He was okay with disagreeing with people. He was always respectful. And I didn't see anyone who was disrespectful, but I did witness other candidates perhaps maybe trying to walk a little bit of a finer line, and I understand that that is part of the job. You have to be diplomatic, but you also have to be authentic. And so that really struck me. But like I said, I would accept...I mean, I will accept whatever it is because I have no choice, but I think there's a lot to be said for Mr. Connor's track record. Again, I think he's great, but there's...you know, whenever Mr...or I'm sorry, whenever Dr. Phillips said that he wasn't afraid to get fired, that's when something kind of got my attention. So anyway, take it for what you will. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle Posey, Vicky Nishwander?
Hey, guys. Michelle Posey. Today's a very hopeful day. I know a lot of people took time out of their busy days to come here, and many people have said where this journey started for them a couple months ago or even at the time of the election. For some in this room, that goes back even farther than that, and even further than I've been around here in this boardroom. So many times, I hear people say, you know, things like, "What's the point? What kind of difference can I make?" And I think to some extent, whether you're a Democrat or Republican, you might be able to share in those feelings, like, "I'm just one person. What difference can I make?" And that's why I'm so proud to be here today, regardless of who you choose really, because we've been able to do that in this room. We were a community that was...where a medical decision was made for our students in this room against a very strong governor's orders and against the will of many parents. That's a hurt that I don't know how you recover from, but you can at the ballot box. And it moved people to get involved, and let's face it, people should get involved either way. But so today feels a little bit like the start of a new journey because we can close that chapter. We don't forget. But this is where we got to make a difference. Somebody said that, you know, "We don't want to see politics in this room." You're right. That's why we voted the way we did. That's why we are looking for a new superintendent. I believe that the new superintendent doesn't necessarily need to be an educator. I think we let our teachers do what they do best. They educate. We let you do what you do best. You create innovative policy. I need somebody in that chair who leads. You know what speaks of leadership? Military background. And two of our candidates do share that. You know who puts politics aside and puts their life on the line, regardless of if we have a Republican or Democratic president? The military. You know who fights for our First Amendment right to be here today? The military. Do you know who can push a strategic plan forward? Somebody with military background. So I hope that we're not assuming that that's somehow irrelevant here. We did just have a wonderful three-day weekend I'm sure everybody enjoyed for Memorial Day, so it would be ill to think that. The last thing I want to say is that today starts, I think, a new journey of hope. I love that you guys included the community in your decision-making, and I hope, I hope that you have the strength and the courage to not listen to a lot of the chatter, but do what God puts on your heart to do. Thank you, and God bless you.
Thank you. Vicky Nishwander, I'm so sorry if I'm not pronouncing that correctly, and Gavin Rollins.
Hello. I'm Vicky Nishwander. Just look at how it's spelled, and you can kind of figure it out. I've lived here full-time since '06 with a background in public health and education and have been involved in local issues, including running for office on two occasions. My daughter has attended several schools here. You have a difficult and consequential decision to make in choosing the top candidate for the next superintendent of Sarasota County schools. These are challenging times across the board, and we all want our children to thrive and succeed in their unique endeavors. A given is change is happening, and there needs to be weight on which candidate would be best at working through the upcoming changes in the most effective and efficient manner. No doubt, the budget is going to be a huge concern, making it all the more important to have clear priorities. I see Mr. Connor as the best candidate for these changing times. His background of moving up the ranks in the school system, along with his accomplishments along the way, speaks volumes for his competency and his abilities to work on all levels. He has a comprehensive understanding of issues impacting on our schools. His focus on improving educational outcomes and experience in curriculum development, an emphasis on collaborative planning and shared responsibility, besides his emphasis on systems approach, will be essential in these changing times. If we had an option and could afford a deputy superintendent, I would suggest Mr. Phillips. He would be instrumental in developing and anticipating technological changes for smooth transitions that will make for less headaches and expenses. His focus on systems that interact well together would be beneficial on all levels of the school system. He portrays himself as a great diagnostician. I don't see him as our next superintendent, however, as his background lacks teaching experience that would impact on comprehensive strategies for problems and improvements. Please choose Mr. Connor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Gavin Rollins and Esther Rockwell.
Good morning, board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Gavin Rollins, and I'm going to speak through the lens of...I was a former county commissioner in Clay County, so I got to work alongside Mr. Van Zant. I also served in the military. I'm in the National Guard, so I got to...I've served with him in uniform. And I'm also a history teacher. I have a master's degree in education and ESE certified and have taught in the classroom. And from that perspective, today is June 14th. It is Flag Day, and it's also the Army Birthday. And so I'm reminded of a great military leader who has similar qualities as Mr. Van Zant. Dwight D. Eisenhower was one of those where, at the time of his selection as Joint Commander of Allied Forces in Europe, some people criticized it. They said he didn't have this skill or that skill. But one thing he had was the ability to make others around him better. And what he did was select highly qualified people and brought them around him, and he was able to lead a coalition. He was able to bring together the French, the Free Polish, various groups to defeat Nazi Germany. And Mr. Van Zant has that ability to bring together different members of the community. He understands that a school system is about the students and the teachers, but it's also about bringing together the community to make the entire community better. It's about creating civic citizens of excellence, and that's what I think is so important. When people talk about politics this way or that, what's sad is that we all know politics has been infused into our school system. They just don't call it that. They don't say, "I'm a Democrat. I'm a liberal," or this or that. They just say, "We want to fundamentally change your child to hate America and to do everything against what this nation stands for."
Quiet.
What Mr. Van Zant will do is return our focus to creating citizens of virtue and excellence with high academic levels of achievement. And to do that, he'll build a team. He will bring around competent people. And as a teacher, I saw that firsthand. When I was getting my master's degree in education leadership, we looked into the data and the nuance. But what was so critical to all of that was leadership, and that's what he understands first and foremost. He understands how to bring those coalitions together, whether it's the business community, whether it's nonprofit organizations to support schools. And that's the thing that you get, the advantage you get from a non-traditional superintendent. You get somebody who can bring those different views. And sometimes those who have gone through the traditional path of one step after the other within the education realm, they focus only on the siloed realm of education, and they forget it's about a community. It's about building a strong community. And so if you select Mr. Van Zant as your next superintendent, you'll have the opportunity to take hold of that leadership that will bring together the community from different parts and also build a strong leadership. He's the only person in this selection that's been a superintendent, and he had an outstanding record. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Esther Rockwell, and then the final speaker is Paulina Testerman.
Hi. I thought I was going to be one of the last people here. My name is Esther Rockwell. I've been living here for thirty-eight years, so I've seen a lot of these meetings come and go. I got a chance to see and meet many of the people that are running for the supervisor and superintendent, and I was very impressed with Charles Van Zant. Now, I've heard a lot of people complain about him, about politics, but the very people who are doing the complaining are the ones who are doing the politicking. He's very good, and I was impressed by everything he's done, and this is something that many of us conservatives want to hear and see. So my recommendation is Charles Van Zant. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And our final speaker is Paulina Testerman.
Good morning. I'm Paulina Testerman. I have two children in Sarasota Public Schools. This morning, I added up how many hours of superintendent events, meetings, and workshops I have attended or watched in the past few months, and the total tally is about twenty-five hours. I reflect on how many taxpayer dollars were wasted on account of the superintendent disaster. Aside from Dr. Asplin Severance's package of $175,000, we had to pay the search for McPherson and Jacobson approximately $45,000. How much did we waste on attorney's fees, security for these events and meetings, travel expenses for applicants? I cannot fathom how much money this board has flushed down the toilet because they decided that politics was more important than our children and our teachers. But here we are, so I am forced to draw a line in the sand. We need to find a new superintendent, and while the board assured the public that we would have a vast pool of exceptionally qualified candidates, you were unable to provide that. Not one of the top four candidates checked off all of the boxes that Dr. Asplin did, not one. The fact that one of our top four candidates, Mr. Van Zant, submitted a letter of recommendation from disgraced General Michael Flynn should tell the community everything they need to know about the caliber of candidates that applied. I certainly won't be supporting a candidate who idolizes a liar, an insurrectionist, and a coward. So now we must settle for a less qualified candidate. That is the bad news. The good news is, is that there was one candidate whose interviews stood apart from the rest, and that would be Mr. Connors. Not Dr. Connors, but Mr. Connors, and that is something we will have to accept, and we are hopeful that his years of public school experience will help bridge that gap. While Dr. Phillips checked off the doctorate box and seemed generally qualified, it was his lack of hands-on education experience that proved to be his Achilles' heel. We desperately need a superintendent who understands what life in the classroom is like and can bridge the space between the district and the teachers, and that disqualifies Dr. Phillips. Dr. Foster lost my support when we watched her very quietly remove our Title I pre-kindergarten program with zero public input, and then watched her reinstate it when teachers and parents objected. She did not provide transparency to the district and a quality that we are in desperate need of. I want to mark the next part of my speech as the most important part. The superintendent's search firm stated point-blank that a superintendent needs five years to show progress in a district. Not the two years and four months that this board afforded Dr. Asplin, but five years. Superintendents are human beings, not magicians. Apart from egregious missteps, we as a community implore the board... Apart from egregious missteps, we as a community implore the board to give the next superintendent ample time to turn this district around. In summary, stop wasting our taxpayer money, stop playing politics, and give the superintendent the recommended amount of time to do his job. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you to everyone for being so great and quiet. I cannot thank you enough. We're going to take a five-minute break, and then we will resume. One minute. I don't know if people can hear that. If everyone wants to take their seats, we're going to get back and start again. I'm going to give it a minute. Okay, there you are. Can't get moving without you guys. Thank you again, and we'll call this back into session. It's 11:15, and we are here to discuss the final appointment of our next superintendent. I want to do a couple of housekeeping items, but I first want to thank McPherson and Jacobson. I think they did a tremendous job helping us ensure that we had a smooth process, an open process, and I genuinely want to thank all of the members of the community who have devoted a significant amount of time, of their own time, to help us make this, the right decision as we choose this direction. It just is, it underscores how unique and incredible Sarasota County is because there are so many people who are deeply invested in the direction of our schools, as are all five of us, well, all of those who are up here. But I also want to thank our staff. There is a lot of work that goes behind the scenes. Mr. Meniglia, our Communications Director, thank you so much. Mrs. Tompkins, thank you so much. And there are many, many others that did great work to allow this, again, to be an open and smooth transition and discussion. From a, from a housekeeping standpoint, when I had spoken with the firm, the firm, what we believe would be the best and simplest way to move to the next step would be to rank the top two so that we would be able to discuss and move forward. I think that, I will tell you personally, I think that I'm very, very appreciative of everyone stepping forward. I think we have a great, myriad of options. I know that there are some unconventional candidates, and I know there are some other ones who have devoted their lives to education. But to assure a positive outcome, I know that, I think I can all speak for myself, that I believe that no matter who it is, I'll stand behind them and make sure that I can do everything I can to ensure that they are successful, because if a superintendent is successful, the mission and our students will be successful. But I also want to, again, have it in a positive way, so I believe if we are able to go down the road and each person be prepared for their top two, and then we will start a more deep and in-depth conversation. So I will start, Mrs. Marinelli.
I do want to thank everybody. This is, all of our candidates, I think, had something very unique to offer, whether people agreed or not agreed. I think all four were very qualified in, in what they brought to the table. I think my first two would be Mr. Connor, and I, quite honestly, I, this is, the second one's going to be very difficult because I, Dr. Foster has just so many wonderful qualities and has been here. But I also like the fact of, of Dr. Phillips bringing something different to the table, his hook and plan. So, and I listened to what our community members had stated, and, and I also tallied how many positive things that were said. So this is a very, it's very difficult, especially when you've worked with somebody for so many years and know that Dr. Foster brings so much to the table. But I, I am going to go with Dr. Phillips because I, I did like the fact that he did bring many different aspects to the, to the table.
Thank you. Mrs. Rose.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I want to thank the community, all of the emails. I read each and every one of them, especially proud of the Community Advisory Committee and all of you who took time to come here today and be engaged in this extraordinarily important process. I want to start out by saying that I am an educator. I've dedicated my life, my career, and my education to our students, our, our families in this community, and the success of every individual student. And I'm going to tell you that my choices are based on that. Those are the principles I live by. The most important thing for me is that every, every individual student in Sarasota County can read at grade level and can graduate with promise of an independent, happy life. Those are the principles that I started with in Sarasota County in 1989, and those are the principles that I'm going by today. Tried and true and consistent. My first choice is Terrence Connor. I believe in the science of education. I know, and I have lived, observed, and experienced all of the layers, the multitude of layers, the education that goes into that science and what it takes for a student to just be able to read by third grade. If you look at the percentages in Sarasota County, and this is a great county, we all have our differences, and I appreciate, again, everyone's engagement and half. But if you look at, more than 30% of our third graders can't read at grade level. So I, I am going to stay with the science of education, and that has been my commitment to you. My first choice, based on that, is Terrence Connor. He comes with a proven track record of accomplishment, and he exemplifies that science in employing it. And my second choice is Dr. Allison Foster. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Enos.
Well, thank you for the opportunity. I also want to thank all the applicants. I mean, everybody brought a totally different viewpoint. I mean, I also, you know, with the Citizens Committee and talking to the people that were on there, going to the meet and greet the other night, I thought that was well-attended. You know, I received a lot of different viewpoints and spoke to a lot of people. As I look at this, and I'm looking for, one of the things that I know that we continually talk about is in regard to leadership. I also look about in reference to the education, and I think that we're all looking for, how are we going to be able to have some accountability, to be able to move forward as we look at it as a district, as, to make sure that we're doing the very best job that we can for every single student. When I looked at this, everybody brought a different layer of, of expertise to these things, and that's ultimately why, you know, you brought in four. I would have brought in 15 people if everybody would have been able to come in here to be able to speak. I think that that we owe to the community. So right from the very beginning, I said that. Way that I look at things is, I also look at it as having three students here, graduating from here, being from here, all, all those things that we talk about. I also know what it means to be a supporter and being part of the community and being somebody who has a vested interest, somebody who, who came from there, that I look at some of the other, you know, I look at successful superintendents, that when you have skin in the game, so to speak, that you tend to, it means a lot more to you. You know, it means, it means a lot more to you, just as, you know, as, as being a graduate of Riverview, I tend to look at Riverview more than I look at other schools, because that's just what you do. I mean, that's what we do as people because we're loyal to, to where we are. That being said, is the two people that I, I spoke to as well as talking to my, the group of people that I had on the, on the committee and the citizens and reading the comments, is that I think that Dr. Foster does bring that piece of being here, graduated from here, start at the bottom. I, I do believe that she has a plan. One of the things the public doesn't get to look at is the, the one-on-ones that we had with them. She does have a plan after each time we come out, after the testing. So long story short, and we can discuss later, I have Dr. Foster as my first. And then, secondly, the one thing that I did like is I liked Mr. Dr. Phillips, because I also know regarding education with Dr. Phillips is that he was out of the box and, and had the leadership that, I think that, coming from a different perspective and also sharing personal experiences and, and stuff, I really looked at that as also, even though he is coming from the technical field, is that that's something that, as a district, that would be beneficial. So my second would be Dr. Phillips.
Thank you so much. Mr. Edwards.
Thank you. I want to start by saying that I spent, let me start here. Let me start by thanking the board for giving us a second Zoom interview. I, I really appreciated the opportunity and the time span between the first interaction and the second interaction, all of the pieces. It's an awkward thing for me, with my background as a recruiter, to look at what I perceive as a peer-to-peer executive. We're collaborators with a superintendent. We're not their boss, although we have that, that power. But it's a collaboration on what's in the best interest of our district and our feedback and our shared values and our shared experience that hopefully a superintendent will absorb all of that information and make really good decisions, along with what they bring to the party. So, and the, the meet and greet that we also added, I thanked the board for that additional piece. Those were pieces that I think extended the process so that everybody, including myself, had an opportunity really to just observe and talk and, and do the best we could in a very condensed period of time. If you're hiring a billion-dollar executive, it's, it's not the normal way that the business world would go about selecting that caliber of executive. But, and, and then my second piece is that, from a, I have no way of knowing how the votes will turn out when I'm interviewing, so I made it my point to have a relationship with all four of them, that if any of them were elected, I could work with them. And I, I made it my business. And it's no secret that many of us have differences of opinion, and we have to try and work to find common ground, to find common values, and find that lane that is in the best interest of our students. So I want to start out by saying that all four of those candidates, I could work with to the best of our abilities to have strong outcomes for our students, and I thank the candidates for that because there was conversation that we had to, to work at to find, find those common grounds. For me, I have to tell you, again, I'm going to use my business acumen, it, it's not just about, I have to pick a superintendent today and their qualifications today. When I got here as a school board, I looked at, I had four years in the rearview mirror of turbulence and turmoil. It was a bad time, and when I got here, I thought that the superintendent that had been selected right before I got here was that healing force, was that, that ability to say, okay, it's going to take us two years. I think the people mentioned about the five-year reset, and that is common ground for a superintendent. It's a five-year reset in terms of a return on your investment of those programs. So I'm, I'm trying to get through this really quickly to get you to my, but it's, it's an important context to say there were four years that before we got here, and the teachers and the students and the administrators, everybody dealt with that. And then we get a new superintendent, and then it's COVID. And so when you now take where we are today, it's six years. And so when I look at the candidates, and I know there were some snarky comments made about how I was going to, you know, I might pick somebody that doesn't have a doctorate. I think in the real world of what happens, we have to be flexible. Flexibility requires us to find those common grounds, to find that lane that we all work in. in. And so, even though from the get-go, the first thing I said, I'm looking for the same credentials or better, and, and I'm looking for tenure, I'm looking for somebody who's going to ride the long haul here, because we cannot have another reset. Reset was also a very big part of my conversation when I asked questions of superintendents. I wanted to understand, what are they coming in and looking for a continuous improvement model? Or are they coming in to, with a wrecking ball and starting over? That, in my opinion, was a big mistake if somebody presented that, and those were some of the conversations that were difficult with the four candidates that I had. So, lastly, I want to say to, to my fellow board members, and this is the part that I, I really, I saw happily, surprisingly, when we got into conversations that were about academic excellence and safe schools, we quickly got to the same page. When we get into areas where our community, ourselves venture into politics, it becomes awful. And I think if we can make a commitment to one another in this new seated superintendent, that we, I've heard it said, but I mean it. I really mean it, because it's in the best interest of our community and in the best interest of our students and in the best interest of our teachers, that we, we reset and stay in that lane, because I saw it happen for the next, the last two months, and I was happy when we were there. I was excited we were there. So, thank you for the indulgence of time. My two candidates are Terrence Connor and Dr. Phillips.
Thank you so much, and I appreciate the comments. And again, I think was said, this is a very unusual way to make a hire that's so significant, and it's very public, and Florida has unique public record or public laws, and we support open sunshine, but it does make it a little bit difficult. So, I will say that, someone had mentioned during public comment that they thought that this was a done deal. I had no, I still don't know how this will shake out, and, and I think that's good and healthy. I will, again, I will say that I have tremendous respect for everyone who put themselves out there to be considered. I want to first, and, well, I guess not first, but I want to underscore my appreciation for Dr. Foster, who stepped up very boldly to be the interim superintendent. I will say that this district has tremendous opportunity. There is so much greatness inside our district. We are filled with, we have some of the most incredible human capital inside our school district that genuinely care about the success of our students, and that's it. They don't want to hear all of the divisions. They have no interest, whatever their political persuasions are, are not what they go to school and focus on. And that is, it has been disheartening for, I think, everyone, and it depends on how you look at it, but it's been frustrating, and I think we all commonly agree we don't want that. But sometimes it means different things to different people. But I think that Dr. Foster has, had come in and done a lot of work that I don't think was visible to a lot of people. There was a lot of things that needed to be cleaned up or what have you, to allow us some, so the dust to settle, so then we could make a clear-eyed decision on how we move forward. I will tell you, the amount of hours that she has worked is also probably not visible to anyone, but were, I don't know if she slept in the last four months, but she was doing a lot. And my hat is off to her, and as a mother of young children, I know how, I know how hard that is, and I cannot underscore what that emulates, as far as how passionate and how focused she is and, and her true belief that she wants to be here for the best interests of her students, but every student in Sarasota County and every family and all the staff. That comes across very clear to me. The challenge I've had through this, and this is a hard decision, by the way, I don't think there's any simple way that I know exactly which way to go. I will say that no matter what the outcome is, I will support it and want to see that person be successful. Having been the third, this is the third superintendent selection I've been a part of, hopefully the last, and I will say that every time, it's challenging and you learn a lot, but I, I think that we find ourselves in a very unique place in education, not just in Sarasota, but across the country. And for me, that makes me really dig deep to see, how do we move past this? The conversation about politics, I think, is really important to stop and think, you know, are we talking partisan politics? Are we talking organizational politics? Are we talking, it's probably a little bit of both? Because inside of any district or any organization, there are going to be organizational politics. And then you talk about politics when it comes to policy, we're policymakers, there's going to be an element of politics, you know, whether you have a philosophy of a conservative and limited government principles or bigger government principles. Those are all realities that will always be here, and I think we just have to acknowledge that. There's a way to do it respectfully, but I think being foolish to say that it's never going to be an issue is, well, we will not progress forward. We're not being honest with ourselves. The thing where I do believe we all agree is to keep the politics outside of the school and instructional time. And I don't think, and I will say this, and I've said this over and over again, in our school district, because I know it better than, you know, any other county or place in the country, I do not believe we have activists as teachers or as administrators inside our schools trying to promote issues. I just, if we do, it's anomaly and it's very rare. What I do believe, there are forces that are happening above us that are pushing into schools, and it has become a nightmare. It's become a nightmare for our teachers. It's become a nightmare for our administrators, and we see it all play out right here in these chambers every single day. And that is what divides us. I think when we, what Mr. Edwards said is he's spot on. When we are all focused on these issues, that's when we progress. That's when we focus. We know everyone, I have no doubt in my mind that every single person in Sarasota County, whatever your political affiliation, if you even have one, wants to see every child in Sarasota County be flourish and academically thrive. I think it's a, I can't imagine anyone saying, no, I don't want that. Where I think, again, for me, when I think about the next leader, my biggest concern is to do the same thing over and over again and expect different results. And that is where I, and I, and there's, there's an element of, we can go with what looks good on paper, and by the way, and I don't, I actually don't want it to come out in a, in a negative way. People have dedicated their lives to their own education to be better at their profession, and that's a novel that should be celebrated, and I do not want to knock that. What I think that, when we look at the qualifications of someone who is going to be the next leader of a $1.4 billion organization with the core mission of academic excellence for each child, and I like the each, by the way, is, there's a lot of nuances that go around that, it's a large enterprise. It encompasses a lot of logistics, it encompasses a huge budget, and a lot of multifaceted aspects that, that take a different skill set. But the one thing I think is interesting, when we look at our applicants, our finalists, is something I didn't necessarily consider was the military background. And there, it was said today, and I am, I will, well, let me step back. I didn't do research or Google searches on anyone outside of, I read what was provided to us, but I did not with, on purpose, because I don't know that, the press always accurately gets it right. I'm sure I could speak with personal experience. And I wanted my own instinct to respond to when I read it and got to meet those individuals, because I think that's, I think that's meaningful. And I'm glad I did that, because there are going to be various opinions, but I wanted to kind of have a fresh eye, looking in and saying, is this, how will this person allow us to move forward? And I think when we look at the military background, it actually affords a very unique opportunity for the organization and a viewpoint where it is apolitical, because there's a common mission. And if I think of, people often talk about public education being under attack, it is being under attack. It is absolutely being under attack, and it's being under attack with special interest groups, and I'm not putting a partisan spin to it, because you could go both ways. None of us want that inside of our schools. We want our focus to be at every child, no matter what their background, no matter what their race, no matter where they come from, that this is a safe place for them to learn, for them to be accepted, and for it to be, for them, our focus to be on their academic excellence and to embrace their families, so that that's where their roles are. And I think those are where the divisions come. We have a diverse community, which should be celebrated. I make no mistake of that. But we need to respect the fact that we have a diverse community that has all different viewpoints and backgrounds, and it's not just unique to Sarasota. We look around the country, it is, it's explosive, because there are lines that are being crossed. So, when I think of, and the word conservative comes up a lot, and I want to clarify this, in my, the way I think of a conservative is not a political affiliation, it's a philosophy of what the role of government is and what the role of the family or outside that. We are a government institution with a very important mission, which is educating every single child so that they can be successful, no matter what their background is, no matter where they come from, and no matter how much, you know, we could keep going on. And again, I know, no matter our differences, we all agree with that. And so, my, my first choice, now when I look at this, so we don't have a three-way tie, but I will candidly tell you, I, I think, having spoken to people and the outs-of-the-box aspect, I think Charlie Van Zant brought a very unique opportunity for this district. I know that that makes people turn, and, and I get that, and, and you know what, but sometimes people surprise you. Now, at that same time, and so, that was my first from the get-go, because I believe there is an ability to come in and look at things from a very tactical aspect, and I don't want to take away the, the personal components of the very important part of this operation, but what I have seen be duplicated over and over again, when you're inside of a district and very close to it, it makes it sometimes very hard to make the critical decisions that are needed. That being said, when it came to Dr. Foster and Dr. Phillips, there was a little bit, it's, they're right in line. So, I'm not, I, I'm going to go, because I don't want to see us do a three-way tie, I would like to move forward. But I looked at Dr. Phillips, and I think, again, he brings a very unique and refreshing response to a lot of what I think will help us get past where some of we, we've been stuck. And, and there is a benefit when you have outside perspective looking in, but you cannot compare to the institutional knowledge that someone has who has not only worked here for years, but went through the district. And, and so, I really do find myself at a place where I'm very tied between Dr. Foster and Dr. Phillips. Having worked closely with Dr. Foster, I, I think that, again, I go back to the challenges that we could have the best organizational structure, that you, and I have no doubt that every single one of these people would be able to execute upon that, but if we are unable to address the onslaught of what we'll just broadly call it, I can't think of another word, I'm trying, like, the cultural war things, where we know we all, there's a lot of disagreement, and I'm not, I don't want to take sides on that, but there's just disagreement that's inevitable. If we can't find a way to put up barriers, so that is not constantly creating divisions between our community, that's the person who need, that, whoever can lead in that manner is what's going to get us past all of this and get us refocused on our common ground to our students' academic success. So, my, again, having said, because I know Mr. Van Zant didn't seem to have any other support, but I wanted to highlight, because I think there is an opportunity to take a very out-of-the-box aspect, I, man, we're going to have a three-way tie.
That's okay.
That's okay. I, I will rank Dr. Phillips as my first and Dr. Foster as my second. So, that would put us down to Connors with three, Dr. Foster with three, and Dr. Phillips with four. Now, that does not make it, I'm not making, I would like to go down to the next discussion so that we have, excuse me, I'm sorry, this is a very, again, I, we've done so.
Please.
Yeah, but, thank you. But there's a better way to do this. Let's not yell from the audience. I don't want to clear the room, because we've done such a tremendous job. So, if you have any issue, you can speak to one of the officers, and the appropriate way will for them to bring that forward to the dais. Thank you so much. Since there was, just for clarification again, so, Mr. Connor had three votes, Ms. Dr. Foster had three votes, Dr. Phillips had four votes, and Mr. Van Zant had none. So, moving forward, I wanted to open up to discussion or any, I think we all got an opportunity to hear from one another, but Mrs. Rose?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. When I look at that tally, I'm, I'm looking at first choices and second choices, and I am going to, again, my commitment is to education and academic achievement, and I'm going to move for Terrence Connor to be selected as the superintendent of Sarasota County Schools.
I have a motion to nominate Mr. Connors by Mrs. Rose. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Mr. Edwards. Any discussion? Mr. Enos.
Just for clarification on that, I have, Mr. Connor has three first-place votes as we, as we look at that, and I know that Dr. Phillips had one, Ms. Foster had one, and Mr. Phillips had three votes for second place. So, based upon that, as we move forward, you know, I still would say that, you know, I think that any, any one of these people would make a great superintendent, and that I believe that, you know, as we move forward, I think that all of are on the same thing, because when we had the individual meetings with them, then I know that there was a lot of discussion in, in reference to 30, 60, 90-day plans. Of course, I will, I will continue to give my support with Dr. Foster, but ultimately, I think that as a board, I think it is ultimately imperative that we're all in support of the same person as we move forward, and if it's the will of the board in order to support Mr. Connor, then, and then that's how I would proceed.
Thank you. If there are no other comments, I want to say something, and again, I try to keep very clear from any kind, and it's not intended to be negative, I think it's my reflection of just having been up here and seen areas of success and areas of risk and whether someone has the ability to move us to the next step. My, my concern is that there are a lot of, when we look at the different options we have, my strongest belief is that issues that have plagued us prior seem very reminiscent in the potential recommendation being presented right now. I, I think, again, I, we have, we are filled with amazing people inside this district. It's sometimes the systems that are not in the best place that kind of suck things out, and we find ourselves distracted, and I, I do not want to see us continue to go down that path and make the same mistake. And so, my highest recommendation would be to perhaps look forward towards Phillips and Foster, as I am, I'm concerned that we will find ourselves in a similar situation in the future with the current recommendation. Mrs. Marinelli.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I think it's very important that we, as a board, we come to consensus, and we have the, the 5-0, because I think that sends a strong message to the community, and I think it sends an extremely important message to whomever our new superintendent is going to be. I, I would like, after listening to my colleagues and reviewing my notes, I still support Mr. Connor as my first, but actually, my second, and this is, this, I own this, would be Dr. Foster, because when I went and reviewed all the, the public comments and, and all the emails, and she, she is a, has gone through this district, so I'm Mr. Connor and Dr. Foster for second, but I think we, I know we have a motion, and we'll follow that, but we, we, our community deserves it, we as a board, we need to, we need to take our time and work through this of what, what we're going to do. And each student, we, they don't get a second chance at this. The decision that we make, we all own it, and every, every student, every day. And I don't want to mess this up. I want this person to stay for a long time, because I certainly don't want to go through this again, and I don't think anybody else does. So, I think we just need to discuss it, and, and if, if it takes us a while, we, we need to come to consensus. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Edwards.
I'm concerned, one, we do have a motion on the floor that I think needs to be addressed. Number two, I'm concerned a bit about consensus based upon what's happening and, and how discussions are made, but I would add another element here. discussions are made, but I would add another element here, um, from my perspective of why I made the choice that I did, because I only had this conversation with one candidate with, uh, which, again, swayed me to Mr. Connor, and he brought the conversation up. If I look at the school district where we are today, forget all the turmoil that led up to it, but we're facing, um, in short order, 50,000 students. Um, we, we have to deal with the academic excellence and the plans within the strategic plan of what we're dealing with on, of all of our shared, uh, conversation here of academic excellence and safe schools that I complimented my board members on. But there's a strategic business operations element to the job description that has not been discussed by this board, hasn't even been a topic, but it's very real. We're outgrown in the landings, we're building schools, development is happening left and right, and we will be a 50,000, uh, school, uh, student district in short order, which means the whole infrastructure of headcount in administration and who reports to who, and all those things are going to dramatically change. And, uh, Mr. Connor was the only one that brought that up. Um, he was the only one that showed his, uh, his superiority in academic excellence, and I like Dr. Phillips a lot. I mean, hook and a plan. Everyone knows me, I say, enrolled, enlisted, and employed. It was music to my ears when I heard it. That's why he's my second choice. But there's a whole business operations side of the house that I had that very in-depth conversation with Mr. Connor about. The one thing that I, that I can respectfully disagree with the chair is that, and I use respectfully disagree, I'm, I'm turning a new leaf myself, um, is that I don't think the culture, I think the culture war has been self-induced, and from my perspective, from the, because I spend a heck of a lot of time at civic, um, events and student events and out in the field with teachers, and what I hear more often is that we, regardless of which side of the aisle you're on, that we actually have shared values. There are things that we share in common, many of which are family values, by the way. And so, when you, when you peel back the argument and the, you know, the, the side, it's, it's the extreme fringes that are out there that are keeping these fires alive, when most of us, too, where I do agree with Ms., what Mrs. Ziegler said, we want the very, very best for all of our students. And when we stay in that center lane and we get away from those arguments, and so, the total package for me, and, and that's why I'm adding, this whole other business strategic side of the house, he comes from a district that's much larger than ours, and he's, and, and two districts that are much larger than ours, and I think can help transition the work that's at hand. So I add that as my additional rationale as to why he's my number-one choice.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Marinelli.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And, and I agree with you, Mr. Edwards. And, but I, I do want to say, in, in my one-to-ones with Dr. Foster, in her plans, she, she does have the growing of the landings and, and how this building, this infrastructure is archaic. We all know it. It's, it's, you know, patch it, patch it, patch it. And those of us who worked here for a long time, people that don't, these are the same chairs that when, when the landings was opened, same chairs, over 20-some years ago, and I tell you, they're not comfortable. So, we, we need to, we need to build the infrastructure, and we are going to be 50,000 kids before we know it. So I did want to say that Dr. Foster, she did address that. She addressed the, the whole meeting with, um, to find out the value of this land and what it would cost to build a new facility. She's taken into consideration, you know, we are growing, we're building two new schools. So I think, um, with, with her expertise, she did address that. Mr. Connor, you know, he addressed it also. He, he's, I heard it was like the Hillsborough was the sixth-largest, then somebody said it was the ninth-largest.
That's right.
So it's like, it's huge. I don't want to work in a place that big. So, um, I just think that we really, the two of them are, just have a vast knowledge. All four had a vast knowledge and brought, changed some of my way of thinking, and I, I, I just want to knowledge, acknowledge that, but, um, I'm going to move on, because we have business.
Thank you, Mrs. Rose.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, when it comes to, um, Mr. Phillips, he has not taught in the classroom. I had insurmountable respect for him, and I was quite impressed by him, and, uh, in a, um, very, uh, no doubt, he would make an incredible deputy superintendent and be a compliment to any superintendent. I'm going to go back to my 33 years in this district and, uh, and being in the classroom, and every decision I've made under the mentorship of Will Hamilton and Lori White is about children. Period. End. Um, and the, you, uh, this is, this is my belief system. It's been consistent in everything that we do with children, and this school system is based on the science of education, but it does not go without being said that a person not only has to have the knowledge, but the experience and the, the success of all the surrounding pieces, um, that systems approach, uh, initiatives, uh, being able to be a change agent, accountability, finance, operations, safety, discipline, and incredibly important is talent management, and I can go on and on. And there really is only one candidate that has had that proven experience over multiple of years. Um, I am going to, um, stay with, uh, Mr. Connor as my first choice. This community deserves a top-notch candidate, and I will not be able to stray from that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And if I may indulge, I'll just say, from learned experience, I, I believe every single person up here will work with whoever that superintendent is. Um, there is an element of, and historically, I've always heard the unanimous vote, but I also think being coerced into that isn't necessarily healthy, so each board member really should be able to stand with what they are, but also know, at any professional, any professional who comes in as superintendent, if, whether they had a unanimous vote or not, should be going in full, you know, full force ahead, and know that regardless, they would have the support of each board member, because at the end of the day, that is our responsibility, to see them be successful. Um, you know, the one thing I, well, and I, so I will say that, I, I do believe we are at a, a critical point in, um, in this district, but in education. I think that, um, there are, again, I can't reemphasize enough, that doing the same thing over and over again and expecting different results, and, and that's, you know, obviously, each person's going to be different, so I realize that I don't want to put anyone in a box, but there are a lot of common similarities. And, and so, having the, the, yesterday, being able to have those one-on-one conversations with each of them, I, I know, for me, it afforded me to be very direct on, these are the issues that I see you potentially would be coming in, because I want, again, we, I don't, I want each person to have full visibility, um, going in, because it's going to get them set up to be more successful. But there are things that, again, if I were to look at what divides us, and it's probably a small fraction of really what, what may, what is important, um, that truly keeps us from diving deep into, whether it be the operational logistics and the growth, or the academic rigor, or the programmatic aspect, are these, these fringe areas that find, whether it's, whether it's perceived, or we do in fact find them, um, which there's, I mean, we can't deny that these are situations that have caused problems and have been divisive. When there, of the people who we interviewed, it just did not seem that that was something that Dr. Connor, excuse me, Mr. Connor had a pulse on, and that concerns me, because I want a leader who can catch it before it gets into the agenda, before it gets into our school district, before our teachers have to deal with it. I want that to be insulated as much as possible, so that it's not even a discussion. It will never be a discussion. And I think that with that being on your radar, you can, not denying that, we will continue down, oh, I hope we don't, but denying that is, is my, genuinely my biggest concern. And second to that is, is just someone's ability to navigate the non, I don't mean partisan politics, but the, the operational minutia, um, and, and politics that happen. And so, for that reason, um, my, I, I would not be, I just don't believe Mr. Connor is the right, uh, person for the, uh, for the position at this given time, but respectfully, um, my board members who have years of experience have recognized that, um, your perspective is valuable. Uh, just coming from a different perspective as a board member, that is, that's where, that's where I'm coming from. Are there any additional comments, or? Nope? Okay. Well, I can call the question, we can call a vote, and we'll do a roll call. So I just want to repeat, it's actually the formal motion, so if I could have this actually addressed, because wherever this goes, there will be, in addition, that the, um, the board position of superintendent of schools be given to, um, you're nominating Mr. Connor, and then also to authorize the chair and council to begin contract negotiations. Mrs. Rose, if you want to expand upon that, or we can make that as a second motion.
Uh, make it as a second motion, please.
Okay, very good. So, I have a motion to recommend the position of superintendent of schools to Mr. Connor. I have a, uh, I have a motion and a second, and we'll do a voice vote. Mrs. Marinelli?
Yes.
Mrs. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Enos?
No.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
And the chair votes no, and the motion to appoint Mr. Connor as the next superintendent of Sarasota County Schools passes three to two.
Woo!
Moving on, um, some just additional business that would need to be done is that there, uh, we will need to enter into contract negotiations. Um, we have a tentative date of next Friday, is that correct? I'm looking over at little eyeballs over here. So, there, um, the, we would need to go into contract negotiations to bring back, to authorize, um, before the board, we had a tentative date as a, just as a, I mean, this is, it's workable, but was the 23rd? 26? Excuse me, 26. Um, so, if I may, open the discussion up for contract negotiations, as that's something we need to do to finalize this option for Mr. Connor. Is there any discussion? If not, I would, I'll recommend a motion. I need a motion.
Um, I make a motion that we authorize, uh, council and the chair to, uh, move forward with contract negotiations.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to authorize the chair and general counsel to begin contract negotiations with Mr. Connor as superintendent of schools. Um, is there any discussion? The one thing I just want to highlight, um, again, there's, there's a lot of nuances to contracts, and, but wanting to get some direction, so it's a fruitful discussion. Um, I don't know, Mr. Duggan, if you wanted to make any comments, but we did poll, that, yeah, there's, there's a, there's a base salary aspect of it, but then there's also a number of different items that are part of the package that we've done in the past, um, so that I, are, we are able to bring back something that we know will be supported, um, or if there are any guardrails as far as, I would say, salary, um, compensation maximum, or what have you. Mr. Duggan, do you have any insight?
Sure, yeah, so, um, in public sector contracts, there's usually a couple of things that you'll want to consider. First of all, how long is the contract would be one? By what metric are you going to evaluate the person, um, or metrics? Obviously, we, hopefully, we don't get to termination, but, you know, what does a termination for cause look like? What does a termination without cause look like? Um, and then, of course, compensation, um, you know, of course, there's different ways to get to the compensation, um, evaluation, and some, some people like a higher base salary, it makes the FRS higher, um, that's the long game. Some people like deferred comp, because there's tax, uh, you know, ways to drive down your immediate taxable income. So there's things like that to consider. Um, there's other customary things, uh, within the superintendent world that go with those contracts of someone of that level, the bells and whistles that accompany those things. Um, but that's typically what a, uh, superintendent contract looks like. The other thing I'll add is that statutorily, the board has duties and the superintendent has duties, and what that means is that you need to have one superintendent, a superintendent. So, um, until we finalize things with Mr. Connor, I would recommend you maintain Dr. Foster in an interim role, um, and that we have a set start date contractually that is board-approved, um, and then a swearing-in of the new superintendent, and that at that point, a torch is passed from, if we are able to work out a contract with, uh, Mr. Connor, that a torch is gracefully passed from, uh, Dr. Foster to, uh, Mr. Connor. Um, and that way, we can maintain, uh, the statutory duties of the superintendent in one cohesive place, uh, at one time.
Yes, I would echo that. We would, I would, for continuity purposes, may remain that Ms. Dr. Foster remain in that position until an identified start date has been identified within the contract. Um, if I may just make a recommendation, I think, uh, it's not only standard practice, but I think as mentioned here about continuity, um, and, and in the best interest of the district, I wouldn't go, I wouldn't exceed three years, but I would recommend a three-year contract with a no funny business kind of termination clauses. It would be a general, um, just a regular, uh, simple majority. Um, of course, we don't want to see any kind of discussion of such, uh, but it is the reality of doing business, so.
If I may, one more thing. So I spent, um, yesterday, uh, polling my colleagues around the state, asking them, "Hey, do you mind sending me your contract?" And I looked at seven or eight superintendent contracts yesterday, and I can tell you, the industry standard, if there is a custom, is three years, um, for a superintendent contract. That was almost universal, and, and I looked at, uh, similar counties in proximity, similar counties in population, similar counties in socioeconomic, um, you know, to try to get comparative counties, the industry standard was three years. Um, and then I will also add, um, you know, I have a, in my mind, a range of what accompanies that as well.
Perfect. Um, in addition-
And, 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 I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Kind of lost my train of thought there for a second. And I will say that I think the industry standard is a three-two majority, um, you know, if there is a change in leadership, um, super majorities are, in the superintendent world, not customary, um, so I would, I would say, on a board of five people, um, a simple majority would be what you would shoot for. That seems to be what occurs in the state of Florida widely.
I don't, yeah, I would, I would echo that, and, and wanting to set, again, Mr. Connor up for success, I would not put, I would not recommend putting him under a contract that has a super majority provision. So, with that, it would be, I just recommend that the, the, the guardrails be, um, three years, that there is a simple majority, um, termination clause, for, for lack of a better term, and then the range of salary, um, we currently have, um, at two, we're around 247. Mr. Duggan, I had it right here. Um, but, and because of the advertisement, um, I believe there was not specified. Um, I know that, uh, our neighbors to the north and south and around are around tipping up at the top of 295, um, but again, that has to be negotiated. I just want to have some direction on cap, um, for discussion. Mr. Edwards.
Um, while we're talking about, um, the three-year commitment, which, um, I expressed a, an interest in making sure that we have longevity, um, assuming everything's going to be wonderful, um, I think we had a clause in the last contract that even though it's a three-year contract, at the 24-month point, we offered another three years. Um, so I would, you know, just to sort of keep that process going, um, I would make that as a recommendation from, uh, something we would be looking for.
Um, I, there is a, in a prior, and we'll poll and look at some, but I understand what you're saying, as far as planning and continuity, so that it's extended within not, not leading up to the very end date. Absolutely.
And I would say, most contracts have a, you can amend it at any time by mutual agreement, and sometimes that's a more flexible approach. If that is the will of the board, that would be something you would agenda and bring up, and then, then you're not actually tied into doing it, um, at the outset here.
If I may, I think it just brings up the conversation. Um, it, if we're going on that dashboard approach, it brings it up on the dashboard that would, we, it forces us to have that conversation.
Just from learned experience, there's two things I would recommend and hope this to, to have in it. We wouldn't, while we would not have the spec, specific, um, accountability metrics inside of the contract, I think it should reference, um, goals that we would come together as mutually agreed upon, that will be reviewed at a, at a specified date, and again, not having the date in there, but there are certain, um, benchmarks and milestones that, including the extension of the contract, as I've seen some of the better ones, and that kind of helped manage a five-member board to, to make sure we're ahead of that. Um, I, the, the last thing, again, is, is I would ask that either Mrs. Rose, or Mr. Edwards, or Mrs. Marinelli, I certainly, I don't want to exceed 300,000, um, but I want to get some insight from you, um, as, uh, discussions you've had with this, uh, Mr. Connor, Mrs. Rose.
Um, I'm fine with the range that has, uh, come forth in dialogue, and I, uh, trust that, uh, you will, uh, negotiate that with legal counsel in good faith, and that we will be, uh, not only comparable to, um, counties that are, uh, equivalent to our size, but look to, as has been referenced in, um, comments throughout, uh, this, uh, process, uh, the, uh, challenges that, uh, and the expectations that we have on the superintendent- uh, the, uh, challenges that, uh, and the expectations that we have on the superintendent to be, uh, successful in, um, as part of our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just to clarify, um, so we have a motion and a second on the floor to authorize the chair and general counsel to begin contract negotiations with Mr. Connor. Um, just to reiterate, uh, just from, from some bound, gosh, guardrails would be that it's a three-year contract with verbiage discussing an extension, um, also, uh, understanding within the confines of a, through, a maximum of $300,000 or comparable, as we look at, um, various, um, areas, but I don't think not to exceed 300,000, and, um, also have a, uh, language in there that would include a, uh, accountability metric to be defined as a board collectively in the future. So, uh, if there are no additional comments, let's close out on this. I will, um, take roll call, and I will start with Mrs. Marinelli.
Yes.
Mrs. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Enos?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
And the chair votes aye, and the motion to, uh, for the chair and the general counsel to begin contract negotiations with Mr. Connor passes unanimously. I believe we have Mr. Connor available? Oh, we do not! Well, we had it all set up, so everyone was available vis-à-vis Zoom, so, um, we tried to do what was going to be the easiest, but if not, um, I will certainly be calling him, and, and I want to congratulate Mr. Connor, and I want to thank all of the finalists for your willingness to step forward. Um, this, as has been mentioned, being a superintendent of any school district is a challenge in, in of itself, but it is a very important role, and I am genuinely appreciative of our, of all of the finalists, and, and certainly my, um, again, I had to, I cannot emphasize to Dr. Foster how much I appreciate her commitment and her willingness to step up and help us through the transition as we move forward, um, and also to welcome Mr. Connor, um, hoping we can finalize that and get that back to everybody else. If there are no additional comments, we stand adjourned. Thank you so much.